Guess I'll use the gavel since I have it up here. Call this meeting to order, this, uh, special meeting, it's a joint meeting with Parks, Arts, Arts and Recreation Commission, so I'll have you guys open up your meeting as well. Perfect. Alright, well, let's start off with, uh, welcoming introductions, if you all want to just, uh, go and introduce yourselves, that'd be great. Alright.
Hi, I'm Michelle Morse, um, I just got appointed to Park Arts and Rec this year, and, um, I graduated from CSU Stanislaus, and I work for Community Services Agency doing social work, and it's an honor to be a part of the commission.
And my name is Hannah Noonan, I- I'm also, um, newly appointed this year, this is my first term, um, I recently graduated from Stanislaus with a degree in art and math, and I am a substitute teacher and working at Starbucks. Wow, this guy knows. The one on your road, the crazy one.
There every morning, there every morning at five thirty. Uh, Brent Bullander, I've been on the commission for a while, and, uh, graduated Stanislaus State, retired schoolteacher, and I still coach water polo and swimming, for, I think it's my forty-first year of doing that.
Good evening, I'm Sergio Alvarado, I've been on the commission, well, I came over as part of the Arts Commission, uh, first appointed in twenty thirteen, um, been enjoying my time of service with everybody, and hope to continue.
Hi, my name is Lenny Shadias, and I also came over from the arts into the parks and arts, and I, um, I really enjoy it.
Alright, great, well, Allison, Eric, you wanna? We do know who you are, and, uh, and looking up here, we know who everyone is up here, um, so perfect, let's just keep moving on, uh, moving on to public participation, uh, this is, uh, a time for the public to address, uh, the joint, uh, the Parks Commission and, uh, the City Council, and I know that we have a great art exhibit in our gallery upstairs here, Jessica's House has brought some, uh, fantastic artwork that they're displaying, um, that has some good backstories, I think there's some artists in the back that, uh, would like to come up and say a few words, if you- no, Gabriel, you don't wanna come up? Oh, are you sure? He's nodded his head to say, "No." Alright, some other artists will come up. Alright, Gabriel, maybe you can watch how it's done and you'll come up afterwards. Okay, just watch how it's done. Yeah, please. How are you? It's intimidating, huh?
Her name is Rosi.
Absolutely.
It's called The Invisible String, and we'll also be reading it again at six o'clock, she, um, is heading to group tonight, so she's going to read this story to all of you.
Great.
Liza and Jimmy, the twins, were asleep one calm and quiet night. Suddenly, it began to rain, very hard thunder rumbled until it got so loud that it woke them up. Mommy, mommy, they cried out as they ran to her. Don't worry, you two, it's just the storm making all that noise. Go back to bed, we want to stay close to you, and Je- said Jimmy, we're scared. Mom said, you know, we're always together no matter what, but how can we be together when you're out here and we're in bed, said Liza. Mom held something right in front of them and said, this is how rumbling, rubbing their sleep, sleepy eyes, the twins came closer to see what mom was holding, it was about your age. When my mommy first told me about the invisible string. I don't see the a string, said Jimmy, you don't need to see the invisible string. People who love each other are always connected by a very special string made of love, but if you can't see it, how you, how do you know it's there, asked Liza. Even though you can't see it with your eyes, you can feel it with your heart and know that you are always connected to everyone you love. When you're at school and you miss me, your love travels and all the way along the string until I feel it tug on my heart, and when you tug it right back, we feel it in our hearts, said Jimmy. Does Jasper, the cat, have an invisible string, Liza asked. Sure, she sure does, said mom. And best friends like me and Lucy, asked Liza. Best friend too. How far can the string reach anywhere? And everywhere, mom said. Would it reach me even if I were a submarine captain deep in the ocean, asked Jimmy, yes, mom said, even there. Or a mountain climber, even there. A ballerina or, I mean, a ballerina and rap, even there. A jungle explorer, even there. How about a astronaut out in space, yes, even there. Then Jimmy quietly asked, can my string, although string reach all the way to Uncle Bern, Brian, in heaven, yes, even there. Does the string go away when you're mad at us? Never said, mom, love is stronger than anger, and as long as love is in your heart and the string will always be there. Even when you get older and can't agree about things like what movie to see, or get, or who gets to ride in the front seat, or what time to go to bed, oh, that's right, you two should be in bed, and with that, they all left as mom chased the twins back to their bed. Within a few minutes, they were asleep even through the storm was still making the same loud no- noises outside, and they slept, they started dreaming of all the invisible string they have, and all the strings their friends have, and their friends have, and their friends have, until everyone in the world was connected by invisible string. And from deep inside, they now could co- clearly see. Now one, no one is ever alone.
Oh, hi, a little fly.
We'll be presenting a little bit more later on, but Rosie was heading off, but she wanted to share with all of you today.
Yes, there's even an invisible string that connects all of us as a council too, so don't you worry. Anyway, a great way to start the meeting, anybody else from the public like to address the council at this time? Alright, then let's just jump right into, uh, oh, someone else, Gabriel, you wanna come on up? Just in the nick of time, alright. We're gonna give you a round of applause as you come up, okay? Perfect.
Now tell him why you go. Did he ask you earlier? Yeah? Tell him why you go. Who do you, why do you go to Jessica's House? You wanna read what's on your star? Go ahead and read what's on your star. Show me your star. Hmm? Come on. Right here. Why, what's it say? Come on. Huh? You want me to read it? It says, I wish my sister could see me grow up.
Oh.
Yeah.
Very cool.
Yeah. We go there because our daughter died two years ago of cancer, she was eleven, and we live here in Trollock, she went to Cunningham Elementary, she was, uh, fifth grader, first, when she got spit, and all through her fifth year of school, she only went like three or four days, but, uh, Jessica's House still did it and meant still to us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, cute little guy, alright, good way to start the meeting, puts in perspective. Anybody else like to address the, the council? Alright, moving on to, uh, skate park update, uh, Eric, would you like to give us that update?
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council and Commission, uh, just wanna give you guys a brief update on where we are with the skate park, the contracts are out with the, uh, construction company who's gonna perform the work, waiting for signed copies to come back, um, once we get those signed copies back, it'll take about a week for them to start the work, and we're expecting about a four-month turnaround on the project, um, depending on weather, uh, the skate park lies in a pretty low area of Donnel Park, so, as we're hoping for a lot of rain, we're hoping that it doesn't flood Donnel Park, so we can get that park built within the time schedule set up.
So four months out, um, I'm not very good at math, what are we looking at, what's our target date?
We're looking at February.
We're looking at February? Alright. Perfect. Alright, are there any questions or comments from the commission for Eric on this topic? Anything from the council on this topic? Breezing right through, alright, uh, let's go with the Recreation Facility Feasibility Study, uh, Eric, is that you who's?
Yes, ab- absolutely, um, we're preparing to send out a RFP for feasibility study, it'll be the first time we've done this, um, we're expecting the application submissions to come back October thirtieth, um, some of the important deadlines are by the, by January third, we want to establish an advisory committee to work with the, um, company who's gonna do the RFP, and then we're looking at a final draft coming in in June, um, the purpose of this study, um, it's gonna show how the, the community prioritizes the sports and recreation facilities, facility needs for the city of Trollock in the future, um, it's gonna tell us what could be built, estimated construction costs, operating costs, potential partners, um, evaluating the feasibility between the construction and operation, it'll really provide us with a positive roadmap moving, moving forward, we see a lot of times we have requests for facilities, um, a lot of people come in wanting a variety of different things, whether it's aquatics, golf, um, a place for them to set up for a nonprofit to run, so this will really give us a roadmap that this community helped draw up, and we'll be able to follow that as we go through the process.
Alright, any question or comments for Eric on this? I had a quick question and clarification, so when you do the feasibility study for facilities, uh, citywide, obviously we're looking at city facilities, it takes into account what's available on the private sector side, correct, and on the public?
Look at the facilities we have, facilities that are available throughout the school district, um, we have a list of partners that they're gonna be contacting, um, as they put it together.
Absolutely, I think that holistic view i- is gonna be good to look at, to see what we have, what reciprocity agreements we have already in, in play, great. Any other questions or comments on this item? Alright, breezing right through, and, uh, sorry, what was the target date again that we're gonna hopefully?
We're just gonna come to council at the end of January, or at the end of June.
Okay, completed at the end of June.
Completed, yes.
Under June, perfect.
Mayor, in addition to, um, identifying what other resources are available throughout the community, we're also asking the consultant to, to evaluate our existing infrastructure and facilities, uh, to make sure that we factor that into the discussion about, um, do we continue to invest in aging facilities, or do we look at, uh, investing in new facilities, and, and how do we leverage those two things, so we really are, are shooting to have a very holistic discussion about future facilities, how to handle our current facilities, and then also, as you mentioned, our partners, and how we can all come to the table and leverage our resources to bring the most diversity, uh, to the community in terms of facilities available.
Great. Yeah, Councilman Dehart.
Mayor, Allison and I have been in discussion, uh, I, Eric as well, uh, with a nonprofit on the west side that, uh, falls right in the middle of District Four, our new district, pertaining to a desire on their part for a, uh, boxing facility, and, and although I know we're launching into a feasibility study, uh, one thing I'd just like to bring up as we transition from at-large representation of our citizenship, citizenry here, that, that ultimately, but not for fifteen, sixteen months away, are we gonna have a council member specifically representing District Four, and I think that it's gonna behoove each of us to keep our eyes and ears open for those opportunities, such as this opportunity, uh, where there is definitely a need, um, when we have young people in jeopardy, uh, serious jeopardy from the standpoint of exposure to gangs, at a minimum, perhaps worse, any effort I think that we can make to, to see if we can't make a good idea work, ahead of any feasibility study may behoove us to do, and so I bring that up just, we've already talked about it, so I'm not talking out of school, I think very much in school, but if there's a way that we could even take a look at that possibility, uh, ahead of even the award of a, of an RFP, uh, issuance, I think it might behoove us to do so, uh, there are a couple of options, um, not the least of which are, um, provisioned for, allowance made for ADA accessibility, it just seems to me there's gotta be a way to make a temporary capability available at, at any one, either one or two different locations, while this process undergoes, and, uh, that evaluation is made, so just for the sake of discussion, I'd like to see if there isn't something we couldn't do, I was not planning on saying anything until, uh, council comments after, but this seems like an appropriate place to do that.
Yeah, absolutely, I appreciate your comments, I think that we need to be cognizant too of the, um, public nature of our facilities, and that there are quite a few great nonprofits in the community, quite a few entities that would like to, uh, use our resources, and, uh, I think, uh, fairness, uh, being equal and giving the opportunity to all to use it, uh, that shouldn't paralyze us from seizing good opportunities, I agree, but I think this feasibility study really allows us to look at what our assets are, what we can, uh, pledge long-term to some of these, uh, nonprofits going forward, and, uh, also, like I said, making a equal playing ground for others to access those facilities, so I really appreciate your comments, I agree. Anything else on this? Alright, moving on to the City Hall Gallery.
Mayor and council and commissioners, um, as you all know, tonight we're having a, a reception to, um, recognize our artists who are participating in the Jessica's House, uh, gallery exhibit, and we, um, are very much, uh, in tuned with trying to replicate that as we move forward, and really reaching out to the community and the various groups that are out there, whether it be local students, whether it be our local quilting clubs, things of that nature, where we know we have very talented artists in our community that we would love to be able to highlight in our, in our gallery here at City Hall, um, as you know, we're fortunate to have, uh, the Carnegie Arts Center, which is home to our, um, our gallery where we showcase, um, you know, different types of, of art displays, but we feel that the City Hall Gallery really, um, is meant for the community, and we want it to be accessible, and we want, um, our, especially our budding artists, um, to have a place to, to be able to display their works, and so, um, Eric and the commission have worked really hard, we have an ad hoc committee, um, on the commission to, um, work on upcoming art exhibits, and we're very excited that we have a book scheduled till next summer, and so I know that there was kind of a transition period where we kinda went a while with white walls up here and nothing on them, and so, really trying to avoid that, and so I really commend the commission and Eric for all the work that they're doing, working with the community, I think we have some really exciting exhibits lined up, and we're just really happy to be able to bring that to the community.
Yeah, Councilman Dehart.
Might there be any opportunity to put a reader board down below, as one comes in the main door to point to the gallery upstairs, we might get a little more visibility that way.
Yeah, I think that's a definite, a definite, um, opportunity for us, um, I think there used to be a sign that says City Gallery, but I don't know, maybe it's been removed, but we'll, we'll definitely do that, maybe highlight the artist's name so they know what's going on upstairs, I appreciate that.
So what would, uh, artists in the community do if they would like to have their, uh, material displayed?
Um, their first opportunity would be to make contact with our office, um, and I would say, uh, they can ask for Eric or myself, and we're happy to sit down and, uh, discuss their, their art, and, um, typically we have a meeting with them to evaluate, you know, the type of, um, of art they are active in, and, and we do have, you know, we do have some particulars that we have to be cognizant of when we're talking about a public area to display the artwork, but, um, as long as we can work through those issues, um, it's not a, um, a difficult process in any way, and we just, um, we have different procedures that we have to work through with them, but, um, like I said, we, we're excited 'cause we actually have a, a schedule of, of, uh, gallery exhibits booked up, and so it'd just be a matter of programming them in as to when there's, uh, availability.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Alright, and then now I think we're moving on to a staff update on community art murals.
Yes, and Mayor, um, this item here is, is kind of a joint effort, um, as we had had a discussion about, um, the fact that there appears to be an opportunity in the community, and I know the commission had had a discussion about this several months ago, um, about possibly bringing back a community mural, uh, to the Columbia Park, uh, area, and so, uh, we just kinda wanted to have an opportunity to, um, bring this issue back to the forefront, to see if there was an interest, uh, on council's part, as well as the commission's part, um, to explore this further, um, I think that, um, you know, we've kind of heard from, you know, different areas that they would like to see this happen again, and staff is obviously, you know, willing to do whatever we need to do to allow for that dialogue to happen, uh, so we're just kind of looking for some feedback tonight, and, and whether it's a community mural, or it's some, some other form of public art, we're, we're open to those ideas and suggestions.
I think in some respects, in some respects, this isn't just, you know, permanent, could be temporary also, um, examples which were brought up, uh, you know, the cows in Davis, you know, whether the painted cows, and have them there for a short period of time, and then they auction, like, things like that, uh, we speak of a mural, it doesn't have to be permanent, and then you could also bring in a contest between schools, uh, there's all sorts of possibilities on this we could look at, um, it, it will take a long process, I'm sure, to work out all the fine details that would go along with it, but certainly we're open to be looking to that, and appoint an ad hoc committee within our commission to, uh, start laying down some ground rules.
Yeah, Councilman Nussman.
Yeah, I think, I think a community, uh, mural program, art program, I think something like that would be fantastic, and I encourage you guys, uh, to pursue that, not only in our, just in our public spaces, but also look to partner with, with, um, members in the, in the business community, um, some of the buildings downtown, there's some, some buildings that, you know, a mural would be better suited than, than maybe the, the building itself, and it might add some, um, may add some additional character to, to the downtown, I think, you know, obviously you wanna be, um, selective and thoughtful about, um, how we proceed, but I think that there's certainly a place for that in our community, and I think it's something that would be welcomed, and so, I encourage you guys to continue to, to pursue that, I think that'd be great.
Any other questions or comments on this? Again, uh, you know, we were talking, the chair and I were talking earlier, uh, with Allison, and, uh, it sparked because I think a lot of us do remember that mural that was at Columbia Park, and, um, it fit so well with, uh, the high use of the park, and just kids running around in the summer, and the pools there, and so, it just was absolutely a really good, uh, element of the park, and I think that there's other, there are other spaces throughout the community that we could, um, identify, so, I, I would love to kick it back to all of you, um, something that I do well as mayor is I, you know, if there's a good idea, and then you kick it to someone else to do the work, uh, so, but I think, uh, the chair, this commission, you guys could come up with either an ad hoc, or the whole commission is doing it, but start to identify locations, start to do ground rules, um, we identified, uh, bad procedures where it took, you know, a year and a half for some counties to get something off the ground, and then communities like Davis and, um, Sacramento have been able to do it relatively quickly, so perhaps there's models we can replicate here, um, and then go forward, so, uh, we look forward to hopefully getting an update from you all in a couple of months as to where it's going, but I think that there's, without objection, I'm looking at, I think there's consensus on the council that this would be a great idea to keep moving forward, yeah, so thank you. So with this, um, again, I don't want it to be the council speaking at the commission, so I'm gonna turn it over to the chair to, uh, do the commissioner forum and go from there.
Well, would you have commissioner forum, I mean, I, I'm kinda just looking down here, commissioner comments, and I'm sure, hopefully, it will have some comments from some of the other commissioners, uh, it's almost like a wish list in a way, 'cause these are comments, and one of the things I'd like to see done is, is that we start looking at installing senior citizen exercise equipment in the parks, we do it for the children a lot, but this is one of the things a lot of communities are doing now, uh, for their senior citizens, they're putting in exercise equipment in the parks, and, uh, they're very well-used, and these committees have put them in, and I think our community is one of those that does have a large senior citizen population, and this would be a good thing to be looking into.
I agree, are there any comments or questions, yeah, uh, Councilman Dehart?
One program that I've enjoyed taking advantage of, I guess I could say that, is the, uh, Senior Sneakers Program, where you actually have an opportunity as a Medicare card holder to visit one of the health clubs, I, I don't go often, as you can tell, but, but, but the price is right also, if somebody-
Um, we have funding available through Help Me Out HCD, okay, HCD, uh, where we're going to be developing a park, um, over off of Montana Street. And so, um, originally we had intended to scope the park like we normally would with the open turf and trees, um, but then the drought happened and so it caused us to take a step back and go, is that really the wisest, uh, direction for us to move in? And so fortunately, HCD has allowed us to revise the original scope and part of what we are proposing for this park is a fitness-type trail system. Um, and it will be less focused on open turf and will have a multi-surface court available. It will have a playground, um, and it will have a paved walking path as part of the, the park. And so the idea is that, um, parents, uh, can be working out and kids can, can play at the playground. There's kind of something for everyone, if you will, and so we're excited about being able to bring that concept, but I do think there's an opportunity to spread that idea out throughout the community in terms of these fitness-type systems being placed to other places.
I think it's great and, um, I certainly encourage you guys to, to continue to pursue that. I know that Councilmember Jacob, um, has been a proponent of, of just kind of increasing the overall health of our community and promoting, kind of getting outside and, and health initiatives. And so I think you have some partners here on the, the council to work with as well on that, on that initiative.
And the commissioners.
No other comments or, it doesn't have to be just on the exercise equipment, you know?
Um, I'm here. With, uh, thank you. With the community art murals, I know back in two thousand and eleven, I had seven volunteers, um, that came from the Columbia Park area and two hundred and fifty signatures that they wanted to see a mural, but they, they also wanted to see a structure, they wanted a handball wall. Um, that, one of the volunteers, it's El Vela Lobos, she's the one that, uh, continued on with the boxing gym. Out of seven of the ladies, we had one that continued with, 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 uh, with the whole vision of, that you have a voice and you can make a difference. And so the handball wall and the mural turned into the boxing gym. But I can go back into the community and find out, out of those two hundred and fifty signatures, I still have those and names and numbers to see, um, what we want to do about the mural also and see how they would feel about that. I also had five artists, um, from the community that were willing to, um, put forth their effort and, um, their artwork to volunteer and put a mural on the wall, whatever was agreeable upon the commission. But, um, I'd like, I'm glad to see that the, um, mural idea came back and I can see if I can bring it out of the, bring it back.
Great, fantastic. Any other, yeah, council member, uh?
So recently we, we asked more of, of you guys in regard to, uh, doing the, the distribution of funding to different organizations and I kind of wanted a little feedback on that and as well, um, you have some great innovative ideas. Are we strapping you with too many things? Uh, we, we need a little feedback here.
I don't think we moved on to council comments yet, council member. We're technically still on the, the questions, alright. Well, we'll allow it.
It's great to be given more opportunities to have more of an active role in our, in our community. So absolutely, you know, we welcome the funding, uh, projects or the, the, whatever, I can't remember, the name's not coming to me right now. Uh, but anything else you guys want to throw at us? I mean, you know, we're, we're, we're here, we're eager, you know, we're here, here to serve you guys, we're here to serve the community as well.
Yeah, and I could say, I really appreciate you guys taking that on, um, and we're sorry we had the sort of lack of kind of communication, I think, and direction from council initially when we, we gave that task to you. Um, and I hope that, um, by refining that process, we made it easier and clearer on you guys and I, I really do just want to apologize for initially, I think it's, it's a new process and we were trying to figure it out and you guys were good supports about it and so we appreciate you guys going through all those rounds and, and, uh, taking care of it for us. And it really does help to have competent folks that we can delegate, uh, these tasks who are really immersed in these issues. Um, you know, having served on, on the Parks Commission, I know that, um, you know, it's, it's a little bit difficult because you guys are only meeting once a month, um, but you guys do a great job of, of staying active and engaged and, you know, just, it's really a peace of mind to us to be able to have folks that we know are committed and focused on that so we don't lose sight of these great community programs, um, and, you know, otherwise they'd, they'd fall off our radar because we're so focused on budget and other items. And so we really do appreciate the service that you guys provide.
It's, it is nice to be able to have some other duties, truthfully, having been on this committee for about twenty-five, twenty-six years, truthfully. It is nice to have something new and, uh, this certainly falls into, you know, where, where we should be doing things or at least evaluating. So I'm kind of happy to see a little bit more.
I would encourage you guys, I mean, your role is what you make it, so I mean, I think you're, they're, you know, within reason, take on these initiatives. I mean, we look to you guys to be, to come up with these ideas and pursue them. I think, you know, when I got on the Parks Commission, it was, the dog park was my big thing that I wanted to get done and there was, we knew there was no money for it, right? But you get it approved and then the money turns up. And so I think, don't let the financial constraints of the city limit you guys or, or the council limit you guys. I mean, look for opportunities to do things and, you know, if you get through the approval process, which takes the longest time, you know, even if there's no money, that project is approved and there may be funding that comes down the road in terms of grants or, or private funding. Um, so don't let that, don't let that stymie you. I mean, look for, look for initiatives, you see something that's a benefit to the community, I think, you know, move full speed ahead. I think you have our support. You know, the mayor appoints folks who he, he trusts to, to make good decisions and to look out for the community's best interests and so we sort of defer to you guys to just kind of pave a path forward and go for it.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah?
I just wanted to say thank you.
Perfect. Alright, who's controlling this? The Chair or the, oh, okay, just checking, the Chair. Does she's control? Yeah, it's true. The Vice Mayor's always screwing me over, alright. Anyhow, City Council comments? Any comments from the City Council members? Alright, we're ready to say?
Thank you guys for what you did.
Absolutely. You, you know, going back to, uh, why we're doing these joint commi-, uh, commission and, uh, City Council meetings, so we had one with the Planning Commission already and now we're having one with, uh, this commission. The idea is that we, we want to be in the same room with you all and we want to try and understand what are you guys working on? What are the, what's the gridlock? What are some of the roadblocks that you guys are, um, encountering in some of the projects you're working on? And similar to what Councilmember Noceno said is that we also want to let you guys know that we want you all to keep moving forward in these, uh, endeavors and keep kicking things back to us. Um, I was only half joking about the invisible string and the fact that sometimes you guys are on a commission, the Planning Commission's doing their thing and we're doing ours and we only see the, when the papers and things come back to us for votes, right? And then we kick it back to you or back and forth. So it's better when we can be in one room and, and, uh, and see each other. Um, as with the Planning Commission, um, I do owe the Chair a letter after this to follow up on all of these endeavors. We're making, taking great notes by Jennifer over here and, uh, so we will get back to you about what we talked about and what our roles are from the council perspective, what we are expecting from you all and how we can keep moving forward and we'll come back and reconvene in six months and see where we are. Um, this council is the council of action. We're looking at a strategic plan at our next meeting that has clear benchmarks of how we're going to achieve goals and we'll do the same thing with whether it's the murals or it's about exercise equipment. We'll also be very blunt about saying what we can't achieve, what things are just not going to work right now or at the time for funding or what it might be and what we can do in the long term versus the short term. So that's what we owe you, uh, so we appreciate you guys coming here and, uh, spending some time with us in this joint meeting.
Yeah, I, I would like to commend staff though. I mean, they do an excellent job on keeping us informed of what goes on, progress all the way through, so.
Perfect, great. Well, if there's, uh, no more comments or questions from the commission, um, we have a great art exhibit outs- outside, uh, with Jessica's House, uh, with the, in some cookies, so the exercise equipment's going to be very, uh, appropriate later on, but, uh, I will let you all adjourn and then I'll adjourn.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? All move? All in favor?
Alright, how about the City Council? What are we, what are we feeling? Do you have a second? We have, uh, most of my, Councilmember Dehart, second my, Councilmember Noceno, all of those in favor signify by saying aye. We're adjourned. Thank you guys so much.